This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular January 21st, 2025 council meeting in order at 7:00 or 6:30 PM. I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring none. Motion carried.
Thank you. Well, moving right into the mayor's report. For Councilor Weller, talking about the citizen of the month and how that started. It actually began with my first term as mayor. And actually, your grandmother was the first recipient in January of 2019. I remember that well. I think she just turned 100 years old at that time. But I started it because in my past work history, along with a really nice raise that would motivate me, almost as much as a good raise, pat on the back and thank you from your boss telling you did a great job or keep up the good work. So I wanted to bring that here in this city. And I always think you could run out of people, but that's never happens. It's amazing how it works. And I did it for a while, almost a year. And then the councilors wanted to get involved in it. And I really think that made it that much neater process because it helped each council member know their constituents and reach out into the community and vice versa. So that's where it all started. So it was my month for January to select citizens. And I selected Councilor Norman and Edward Toss for their efforts, mechanical efforts and ingenuity and putting our brand-new docks into the lake. I had a nice talk with Ed and he's been in the, he and his wife have been in the community for almost three years now, I believe. He's got quite a background in carpentry and mechanical skills and he sure exemplified that. So and then, of course, Donald, been in logging all his life. And he kind of knows how to fix things. And then with the help of Dale, of course, and Mitch and Tim, they put the old railings on the new docks and they got the ramp goes alongside the boat ramp, that dock, and then the two docks into the water. Still doing a little bit of work and secure those. But thank you, guys. I mean, you guys, those three days or four days you worked on that. So saved the city of Vernonia hundreds, if not thousands of dollars. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
Scott Blair today.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, sir.
Glad I liked your new hair.
Getting any hair ripped?
A few hairs in the middle.
Look happy.
Look happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the best way to keep this going is it's up to each council member's possibility to see when their month is and they could check with Stephanie and get lined out. So that's the way that works. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Could maybe you send out the list again of not only us, but the people that have been selected? I think we have that. So yeah.
Absolutely.
Because I had another person nominated to me, but I don't know how many times they've been on it. But probably worthy of having it again, so.
Okay, are there any presentations? Council committee meeting reports. Any public works?
Nope. We haven't had a meeting.
The library had one.
Yep.
And discussed a lot of things pretty good. They are trying for a $5,000 grant to help with miscellaneous stuff for the library activities, hopefully for the summer. So they're working on that, hoping to get that passed through.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
I did attend a senior center board meeting last Friday. Nothing out of the usual, pretty good. Things are going along really well. They, at Christmas time, they, Christmas Day, in fact, they had the Lions Club and staff that works at the senior center put on a really nice dinner for our community. I think they had about 80 people participate with the two dinnertimes. So went really well. And so I will also report, we're putting together a committee. As most of you know, that in July, their restriction for age restriction is up. And after July 1st, anyone and all ages can participate. So we are putting together a committee. I'm on that committee because I'm on the senior board president. Josette's on that and Toby Finzel. And so we're kind of meeting, we're going to meet next month. So we'll pick another day where you could meet with us, Josette. So that's all I have to report on that. Topics on the floor.
I have one during topics on the floor and then two for during dark skies.
Okay.
Your one during topics on the floor is Mr. Brett Cosley.
For those that don't know, I live up on Louisiana at the top and we just recently had the project there. My house has like a drop-off on the west side of the property. And as part of that project, some trees were taken out and some of that hillside like to allow more lighting. So when I first started about the project, I was concerned about that. And I was told that there would be some eco blocks or something done there to reinforce it. That has not happened and I am, as I expected, getting erosion on that drop-off now. That drop-off was stable for 30-plus years before construction and it's starting to rot already. So I'm just trying to find out when that might be addressed.
Do you want me to speak?
Do you want to give her?
Brett emailed me. I had the engineer go look at it. He is not seeing where eco blocks will work, but he's seeing where potentially we should seed it to get foliage to grab that because he's like, we would have to go many layers up to kind of address it. So he wants to try and seed it to get some, granted, it's not the right time for that kind of seeding, but get some foliage to grab in there, the way maybe it had in the past. But I did have him go up and look at it after you sent the email on Friday. Sent me one just recently and then he came out Friday. Yeah. So he has got eyes on it and we are coming up with a plan of how to, what to seed it because it's new to us too, right? What's going to be the industry's best product to get on there that's going to grab and be drought tolerant? So it doesn't just die off and all of that. But yeah.
I guess no one said he'd have to pay for my house.
Yeah, you don't want.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. Library Board Meeting Management, November 2024.
I move to approve the consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Weller.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nominously approved.
Okay, consent agenda for approval. City Council Meeting Management for January 6th, 2025. Any questions or discussions?
I'll move that we approved the consent agenda for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Weller.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nominously approved.
Okay, moving right into unfinished business. Dark skies lighting, revisiting. So we're going, at this time, those who signed up to speak, forward. And we're allowing three minutes per speaker.
The first speaker I have is Steve Weller. If I can.
You're okay. She's just trying to get her timer on.
I hope you got the service.
Steve Weller, 1264 G Street, resident of Vernonia, 65-plus years. And I am not in favor of the dark sky initiative. I believe we have spent money putting lights in the street a few years ago. And I am one who believes you need to save money on occasion. And I can't see the necessary need to spend more money, put different lights in just to satisfy a few people who think it needs to be darker. I just had the opportunity to read all the letters of support in here. I did see a couple of letters of non-support. But I know I speak for a number of people that know me and involvement in within churches and in organizations in the community. And the vast majority that I have spoke to are not in favor of seeing a change. And my biggest contingency is it's just been, you'd have to correct me, but it's only been a few years ago that we changed all these lights to what we have now at expense to us as a community. And now you're asking us to do it again. These dark sky people want to come in and hand you an open door with all kinds of money and change the light bulbs and then maintain them as we go down the road, fine and dandy. I don't see the necessary need to change them. And as far as the safety aspect and concern about glare that I read in here, I don't see these lights being a glare. What I see being glare problems, headlights, I got to mean on current modern vehicles are extremely bad. So what I see is instead of going forward, we'd be going backwards again. And I just don't see us needing to spend taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
And the second is Sharice Ash. I did ask her to help me.
Oh, I was going to say.
I approved it.
All right. So there's these two for everyone. I only printed three of this picture because it's a lot of toner. So you can share. All right. Oh, my bad. All right, Sharice Ash, 2331 North Miss Drive. For those of you who don't know, I have a college degree in photography, which is quite literally the study of light. So I feel aptly qualified to talk about it and hopefully kind of debunk some of what I've been hearing and reading against it. So I am in support, as you can tell from the letter I just handed you, of passing this proposal. And I believe that it does align with the values of the city of Vernonia as a rural community surrounded by wild lands and a lot of wildlife. The amount of light pollution in the U.S. is rapidly increasing. When LED lights came out, it was the fixer everything because they are very energy efficient. However, someone decided somewhere along the way that LED was synonymous with cold lighting. And that is not true. LEDs can be warm lighting. So while I do hear the complaints that the city recently bought light bulbs, it is unfortunate, but it doesn't really negate the fact that information wasn't available at that time that is available now. There is, of course, an upfront cost, but I don't think that the 1,300 up to 2,000-ish that we're looking at is astronomical, certainly not something I think taxpayers are going to feel in their bills. And also that is an upfront cost. So long-term, the bulbs are not expected to cost any more than replacing the type of bulbs we have now. And the city would likely save on our electric bill by using the new bulbs because they are slightly less lumens. The focus of dark skies is not to make dark towns. It is to prevent the light that is spreading upward. So in addition to considering warmer light, they also promote shielding the light so it goes down. By having a slightly dimmer light and focusing it downward, you're getting just as much light on the ground without getting additional light in the sky. Altering the light with the proposed bulbs affects the fall-off going at distances. So the light rising up to the sky would be less, but the light reaching to the midpoint between the light poles would not, it would not fall off at that distance. So you're not creating dark spots in town. People saying town's going to get darker. That is not based in facts. The U.S. National Institute of Justice did a report to the United States Congress about studying factors that prevented or created crime. And they found that with various studies that they reported on, there was not any confidence that improved lighting prevented crime. In fact, sometimes they found the opposite, that brighter streets had more crime in the areas of theft and graffiti. So these are things I would like you to consider since I now have to wrap up. It affects the wildlife, the migratory birds, the amphibians, and the nocturnal animals.
Thank you, Sharice. So here we are.
That was it?
Yep.
Yes, those are all I had.
So I think I'll begin. I've looked at both the light examples at the library, the difference between the halogen or the, what am I trying to say?
5,000 Kelvin to 2,000.
I do like the softer light and then the 2,200 lumens down at the Bridge Street, Adams Street, by the movie theater. I really like that light. It's softer. It's brighter. I just drove by tonight and looked at, compared the two lights. It is brighter and both on the ground and up on the building. Especially that crosswalk there, it's really, really dark. I'd say that's one of the darkest ones in the town. And then on the other hand, you know, it's going to cost us some money. We put those latest ones in, I think, 2019. And we have 25, or excuse me, 30.
35.
35 light poles at almost $75 apiece for the bulbs.
The originals?
Yeah.
Between 80 and 100.
Yeah.
Some were cheaper because we got better.
Basically, bottom line, and you add the labor costs, possibly globe replacement if there's some cracks. You're looking at between $4,000 and $5,000. That would have to come out of streets. We don't have the money in the streets for that. I don't believe the citizens of Vernonia would want us to spend money we don't have at this time. I'm totally open to looking for grants in the future. Say from the Dark Skies Initiative, if we can get a grant for $5,000, I would seriously think about it because I do like the softer yellow light. And I think they're brighter than the, what's so weird I'm trying to?
Than the white light.
Yep. That's my opinion. Anybody else want to talk about that? Dale?
Yeah, so yeah, here, here, a lot from the public about, you know, it'd be a waste of resources to, you know, I mean, we've got to remember too, we've got to factor in the cost of these lights we put in. We'd be throwing them away or trying to resell them potentially, but so there's a cost there. I think there's a solution to this. I know staff doesn't like my solution, but.
I might not have heard of your solution. I wasn't here.
Well, when I first, when I first brought it up, buddy was too thrilled.
Oh, I know your solution. I still don't like it.
But yeah, you got an example of it right now, the one light down there. And I haven't seen anybody on Facebook or anywhere mention that I don't like that light, what's going on? Nobody's said anything about it. So the solution, Mr. Mayor, is we don't change them all out at once. We change them out as needed. We achieve our goal in the end. But the bigger part of this picture that we're not remembering is we also have a vendor that's supplying our street lighting. And they currently, or what they're putting up for replacements are those really bright LED lights. If we don't get ahead of that, this whole town will be full of them eventually. So if we're going to make, if, I think there's a primary decision. Do we want to go to the lower temperature light or not? The cost factor, we can either spend the money and switch out our downtown lights or we can phase them in as they burn out. Two different things, but also working up our vendor. And it sounds Mr. Calhoun has talked to Astoria's Electric. And they told him that they could meet that standard. I think we would want, as city staff would want to review that. We want to make sure that we're, you know, when you go to the lower Kelvin, usually you give up lumens. We need to understand how many lumens we're getting out of these. The ones are kind of the reddish tint, orangish tint now that we have in town. That's what we grew up with. I mean, now we think that would be the low bar and want to meet at least from there up. And that's what we did with the light on Adams. That's actually 1,000 lumens more than the white lights downtown. So and that was the other concern I heard was safety. And kind of hard to argue this one out here, it is less lumens. It's, it does, it's hard to tell in that situation to really judge that light. But I think the one down Adams is fair game to judge that. And I'm with the mayor on that one. I think you definitely can see a little better around that light. So we're not putting ourselves up for an issue of safety by doing a little higher lumen light, but meeting the right color. So that's what I'm leaning, that's what I would lean towards is a phase in. And yeah, our downtown might look kind of awkward for a while, but it's, I don't know. Nobody's complained about that one. And I drive down, I notice it, but it isn't drastic. So.
How often are the bulbs changed?
They're supposed to be 50,000 hours of life, so years.
So it's going to take a long time to change them?
Yes.
Unless a globe gets cracked and moisture gets in, that's how we lose some of the bulbs. Like if we'll know a light's out, we'll go up there and the globe is cracked. So water has gotten in. Those are the ones we've changed so far.
And you're looking at $40 versus 80 to 100?
Yeah, they're cheaper bulbs to buy. And that, what the mayor said is, I did like an estimate of the 35 poles times the $40 a bulb for the one we bought down there, which comes to like the 1,400, which is very similar to Michael's proposal. The things not in Michael's proposal that are in the city administrator head are if we hit a broken globe, if we get up there and one's cracked, we're going to replace it. So there's potentially, I put, maybe we'd find six broken globes at $90 apiece. So there could be another $540 of cost there. And then I didn't know how many days and staff time, it's going to be two people with the boom truck. So I went like 800 to 1,600. They could be really fast and be at 600 is what it costs. They, it could take them a long time or they could have to adjust heights of the housing. That could take a long time. So I just did a range there. And then I did a low shipping and a high shipping. So my range is low project cost would be about $2,940 and it could be as high as $3,940. So that was kind of just back the napkin, what the costs are on the website, what their shipping looks like, what my guys are fully loaded for days, a day, two days, more days. Just so everyone knows where he's getting that number of the, not just the 1,400.
Thank you, Dale.
Susan?
I'm happy to speak. So I have some observations. There, I come into town often late. And you come up 47 and it's very dark, or you come from the other end, it's very dark. And coming around the corner, it gets, it does get pretty burnt. It's, it's kind of stark. I know the difference between driving through all areas I drive through and you go through these very dark areas and all of a sudden you're just bombarded by light. It's very, very difficult to see. And pay attention because you are, you're getting kind of bombarded by a lot of light. And I understand that's not entirely what this is about, but that's part of what I'd like to say. If we are concerned about crosswalks, we could potentially get a brighter, warm-colored light on those sections. I know that they do it like up at the school. I noticed tonight driving through, those are a whiter light. Those are a whiter light. And I think that's not inappropriate. I've lived several places. Colorado went from the very bright stark white lights to the warmer, they weren't LEDs at the time, but the warmer lights. And there was a lot of uproar about it. Until it got in and everybody really appreciated the fact that you were traveling. You know, again, Colorado's a lot like here. We had, you know, it's very dark, beautiful skies, you can see all the stars until you get into town and it's very bright. And when they changed to the darker lights, one thing, particularly when it snowed or was icy, it was a lot easier to see. Definite increase in wildlife, particularly elk. That's not always a good thing when you're driving through. And again, in town, we're not going to have elk. But I witnessed firsthand in my small town that I lived in, as well as in Colorado Springs, that it did make a difference when it came to wildlife. I'm in favor of changing the light bulbs. It's not that it's going to be weird looking. I mean, it is. Not everybody who travels through town is going to notice or care because people who live here will appreciate the savings that they, they, they have observed that they think might be garnered by not changing the light bulbs out all at once. And I'm going to say this, and it might be politically incorrect. We support things that do not affect as many people as a city, as a council, as this will. And it's been a cost that we have paid annually or every couple of years as donations to different projects and promotions. Yes, we should support the city. We should support the organizations who are here. But also, this is something that truly does affect everybody who drives through town or walks through town. And I think it's a good investment.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess for myself, I would say that if we don't have the finances to, to fund it at this point in time, that it's something that should be stayed. And if somebody wanted to organize and raise a fund, to come up with the funds to, to pay for it, then let's revisit it then. That would be my position.
Okay. Question on that to staff. Can we find out if it is possible to move money around? Or if there is a fund that would be able to support that?
Yes, it's possible to find that out. I can find where, if you wanted to support it. Find it.
Okay. I appreciate it. So you'll bring that back to us?
Sure, February 3rd.
If it is the will of?
Will of council, okay.
So, Dale. So I wanted to get some clarification and we've got to the, got the chair in the Public Works Committee and then Mr. Calhoun that was sponsored this. Am I correct in that was the will of the Public Works Committee that we adopted a?
Resolution, ordinance?
Not an ordinance.
Resolution?
I don't think they wanted an ordinance. It was recommended, not a recommendation.
Resolution.
Resolution. That adopted these standards. Am I correct? Because I know your verbiage in, in our package says we were wanting to do the Dark Skies Initiative as an ordinance, but so, so it's a little more than just us taking. I think it's, it's, we should make a policy decision from the city's perspective. And we're, again, I said this in the last meeting, we're leading by example. We didn't want to force it onto the residences, the people in the town, force it down your throat. But I think once you see what this looks like, you know, some people I know myself, I've got two security lights, totally naive of the situation when I bought them. Yeah, the next time I have to replace them, I'll be looking for something a little better. So, but I, I think that's the other part of this is we needed to make a resolution to adopt this as policy of the city of Vernonia and then also asking our vendor to follow suit.
Okay, if that's the will of council, you want us to bring that? It says when, when the utilitarian use of a light meets a standard where we can address it and replace it with a warmer light, the city will blah, 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 something to that effect. Like where it's task lighting, maybe we aren't going to ever switch it if it's not aimed up or if it's shielded, but where it's, you know, something that kind of talks about that with city-owned lights.
Right, because a skate park would probably be an exception.
Yeah. Play shed that's under, lake lights could probably, I went down there today.
Which one?
They could probably go to a brighter, warmer light, the lake lights.
Light?
They have pans on them, but it's still a lot of, if you were doing it, I think we eventually do there too.
Okay.
And I would probably include, if you're going to, over time as they go out, replace them, the ones on the gray bridge, because it will look really weird. Only some of our lights are the warmer color, if that's what council wants, you know?
Are we at a point where we are ready to ask for that blanket? No, I don't think so. So.
We could, I think we're at the point now where we could make a motion to direct staff to bring this back in the form of of a pre-resolution.
A draft resolution?
Draft resolution in our February meeting.
I thought we were getting numbers to see if we could afford it.
Well, I can just.
Decision is going to be one or the other, right? Or are you talking about a resolution?
That would set the policy that would then, should the money be there? You guys decide, nope, we're still switching them out as they go out? Or here's this money you found and we agree, we want you to use it for that? It would be a meeting where basically staff brings you all the options.
You're saying either or?
No, I'm saying I would bring you a draft resolution. Should that be the will of council to go the way of slowly transitioning these lights over time? I would also bring you a budget number that says, here's this money readily available and it's coming out of this pot, should you want to do it? And then if you say, yes, we want to do it with the money you found and here's the resolution that adopts this movement that we can, or whatever, that's what I'm hearing. I'm kind of hearing two things. We don't want to make other people do it. We're going to switch them out as they go out if we can't find the money or agree upon where the money is. But you want me to look for the money. All of those things are true, I'm going to bring you all of that. Is that what I'm hearing? So you guys have not made a decision specifically. You're going to make a decision when you know if the money's there or not and whether or not a resolution. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
That's what. Go ahead, Dale.
Well, I'm just trying to get clarification here because I heard a couple of councillors said that, that they weren't against the idea. They liked, maybe one said they liked the color of the light. But it's the money issue that's the stumbling block. But we need to decide, are we, are we supportive of changing the color of the light? We've got two ways we can do this. We can do it over time.
Money out of it.
Be at lower cost than replacing them directly.
Right.
Bulbs less cost than what the ones we're using. So they were saving you money now, folks. Or in the budget, we use some money. So we really do need to decide if we want to have a resolution adopting the new standards of the 2,200 Kelvin and at least 6,000 lumen for our downstream, for our downstream, downtown lighting. And also asking West Oregon Electric to meet a new standard, so. I think we kind of got to answer that question first. If we're not supporting them doing the change, then there's no need to go any further. We're not wanting to.
If the majority of you are against 2,200 Kelvin, then staff should know that tonight.
Yeah. And they're not wasting their time.
Well, I'm just, I'm not against the 2,200. But I am against on our dime right now. Period. And I'll sure be glad to look and say, if their initiative comes forward with a $5,000 grant, I'd be, I'd be okay.
So are you, would you be against?
A policy.
Of replacing it with this new standard, I guess that.
No.
So you would be in favor of adopting a standard?
Yeah, it's a new standard, okay.
I've seen the transition from the regular sodium bulbs to the LEDs. And that costs the city a bunch of money. Because it wasn't just bulbs they had to change, it was a bunch of man-hours rewiring everything to make them work. And I think we put a large investment in switching to LEDs, which is supposed to have been the new, latest and greatest. So as an investment, I think we're going to cut our investment short and throw money away. The second thing is, when this first come to us, within a year, the criteria's changed. So in another year, they're going to change the criteria on these bulbs again. And we're going to have to try to change again to meet the new criterias. And it's like if something else that the city has, that somebody says, oh, I got something better. We just going to throw the old one away and go buy the new one that they think is better? That's how I'm looking. I have no problem changing them as they burn out. But as to go in and change them all right now, no.
Unless we find funding.
Unless you find funding.
Yeah.
So you need a motion for?
Yeah.
That have the staff bring us forward a resolution?
If that's what you guys want to do, yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to bring us a resolution to bring us into a 2,200 Kelvin lighting standard with 6,000 lumen minimum for downtown street lighting. And also to work with our vendor to see if they can bring in that standard also on our, from West Oregon Electric.
So move, there's a sec.
We're just adopting the standard, we're not adopting implementation.
I understand that, but are we also asking them to bring forward?
Oh, to bring forward a proposal where we could fund from our street funding.
And in the resolution, will it specify that they will be changed out as they go?
Well, then again, I think adopting the standard and we're still, I think that's a future decision. Because if, if we say we have the funding. And we, we could or we may not pull that trigger. But I think, I think the resolution really needs to be specific to what, the, the light color and the lumen.
But it won't say how you're going to do it?
No, it'll say that the feat, something to the effect of, when feasible, the city will some.
It usually has something.
Yeah, it'll have.
Who's going to be doing it? Or the city intends to in the future? Or otherwise it's just?
Yeah, yeah.
Yellow lights, period. It has to have.
Yeah, so it'll.
What your intention is.
Currently it would be any, any lighting currently needs replaced will meet this standard. They burn out in the interim here, we'll, you know, pass this and we would do that, but.
Well, I'll probably get, if that's the way council goes and it's as they burn out, I'll probably get tricky and start moving a, you know what I mean? Replacing them in a line and then moving the white bulb to somewhere else, right? Where the dead, doing that and just start making it the whole town as we go. It'll be a pattern, Dale.
Or man-hours move.
Yeah.
Is, but if that's the goal.
So a motion's been made and we need a sec.
I'll second.
Just for ease of lack of confusion for me, I want to do it by name. Councillor Webb?
Aye.
Councillor Weller?
Nay.
Aye.
Councillor Normand?
Nay.
Councillor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
New business, staff report, council president.
Okay, what you have before you is a staff report from me. It's on our stage.
Mass Exodus, quick.
So what you have before you is a staff report from me. Every two years, it's time to revisit committee assignments and council president, if you so choose. Current council president is Councillor Webb. Now's the time to call for nominations and appointment.
Volunter.
Any nomination?
I'm almost old officially.
I would nominate Dale if you'd take it.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Dale too.
Councillor Webb, do you accept the nomination?
Susan would be fucked too, guys.
Any other nominations? Well, we'll take a vote on that, I guess.
You'd have to have a motion and then a second.
I make a motion that we nominate Dale Webb.
I'll second, second and vote and second it.
Councillor Webb?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we nominate Susan Wagner. There we go.
There a second.
You can second it.
Oh, can I second it?
You can.
No, I think so.
Sure. I'll second myself. Now what?
Yeah. That's a little awkward, isn't it?
Okay, so. Like Russell. I think I need to vote on the first one. And then we'll vote the second one, just because it's in order. I've never had a motion made during a motion. Okay, so motion to a point, Councillor Webb was made by Weller, seconded by Councillor Normand. We'll go through the roll call votes. Councillor Webb?
I vote for myself.
Yeah.
Or not.
I guess, aye.
Councillor Weller? Councillor Hobart? Mayor Hobart, sorry, you guys are confusing me.
Aye.
Councillor Normand?
Aye.
Councillor Wagner?
Nay.
Carried. Do we wish to vote on the second motion on the table?
You have to because it was a motion that was.
Yeah.
Let's help me document. Uh, let's help me document this real quick. Okay. Counselor Webb?
I'll throw you with this one. Aye.
Counselor Weller?
Nay.
Hobart?
Nay.
Counselor Norman?
Nay.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion fails. Exercise, everyone.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Counselor Webb.
How many meetings did I get to lead last year?
None. Court didn't give you any opportunity.
Really? Had a lot of checks. Okay. Committee liaison assignments.
Okay. What you have before you is a staff report from me. It's for appointment of council committee liaisons. This again also happens every two years. This is your commitment to attend a committee meeting once a month or less, depending on how often that committee meets. Currently, there is one vacancy on the Parks Committee for liaison, unless anybody else wants to switch things up. So. And the liaison is a non-voting member. You're not there to drive the meeting, you're just there to take in the information and report back to council.
I have a question. So under committee meeting reports, and this is not meant with any disrespect, every meeting we have a senior center report as part of committees. I'm, I kind of don't understand why, but if we do and it is a committee, this is city committees, should we be adding this, or is this something that should be? I mean, there's, I'm sure other things that are important to report on that are occurring in the city. So I don't, it's just point of order question.
So the senior board is not a committee of the city. It would be no different than if you wanted to report on the school board, or are you on the watershed, or Dale wanted to report on watershed. So. Well, it's not a city committee. It's up to you guys to decide if it's appropriate on your, during a meeting or not.
I am, I was the liaison for the senior board.
Correct. That was when the, I feel like I'm cutting you off. Are you continuing?
And I could still be liaison while serving on the board.
So it is not a city committee?
It's not that, it's not that, Rick. It's other ones are, yeah, the other ones are established by ordinance. The reason I think the senior board started is because that is our building. We were under CDBG, and he was attending those meetings, so he started reporting on like the hiccups and the things because I am the staff that maintains that. So that's how that started. He's just continued to do it now that, you know, they're not a established by ordinance committee. It still is our building. That's why he's been reporting on it thus far, but it's up to you guys if you want to continue to get reports on that. If things, I think it was just a transparency thing, because as things would come up there, Rick would hear about them. I'm the staff that's dealing with them, so we just kept doing it, if that makes sense.
I appreciate the clarification. It just seems, you know, we have city committees that we're reporting on, but it's not listed as a committee set.
And I don't do it every council meeting. I do it after each board meeting, once a month. So again, there's one position open in Parks.
Does anyone want to try a different committee? Mix it up? I don't know.
Be a good one for you. So, uh, the Parks Committee meets once a month?
Correct. Tomorrow, actually.
Congratulations, Dan.
You can get on the block.
Don't be shy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they meet here on the fourth Wednesday at 6:30.
Tomorrow night?
Right.
Better get him his liaison packet.
And have him.
Yeah, you have to keep it on what's, what's happening.
You know, I, we have, I'm on the senior board, plus I'm on the cemetery committee. And we haven't met for a year now, just lack of participation, lack of members. I'd really like to get that board going again. That's a big part of our community and we put on a really nice Memorial Day service and Veterans Day and especially Memorial Day services. It's really amazing. I'd like, hopefully, and I've, I've seen ads in the paper looking for members, so. I hope somebody in the community can step up and, can't remember what night, Thursday night, Stephanie?
Yeah, maybe first or second Thursday.
First, second Thursday.
I think it was second Thursday.
But there's only like two of us now.
I know. It kind of ebbs and flows. I think they're, they kind of quit meeting because they weren't really having any issue, right? We had done the road, we'd done the Collibarium, we're selling plots, it's all working out, so they kind of.
They don't have enough members to meet now.
Right, but before that, it was, they were meeting and there wasn't anything to solve, problems to deal with, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dennis. This is from the departments. Police Department.
Thank you. So the, my staff report includes stats from October, November and December, with a year-end total of 2,348 calls for service. I'll keep this short and sweet. The only thing I got to bring up, Officer Schultz attended a defensive tactics instructor course. So now he is a certified defensive and tactics, defensive tactics instructor. We needed that. DPSST requires us, federal officer, to have eight hours of defensive tactics every year as part of our, as part of our maintenance, supposed to have. And that's another reason why Officer Kendall was sent to TASER instructor school, because we have to, every two years, be certified on the TASERS per DPSST. Thing I got to add is our ODOT grant has obviously multiple parts to it, and we've and 21% of the DUI grant, so we still have lots left, and that's good until the end of the year, December 31st. So we've got plenty of time to get all that money, so. Any questions?
So I don't, have you filled them all in on what that grant does? Because I don't think some of them know we even have it.
Think it did.
Yeah.
It was, we applied for ODOT grant. ODOT offers grant money for these this criteria, you know, for speed, DUI, distracted driving. So we take that, we get that grant money and it goes back into our budget to help pay for it. It's kind of a match, so whatever hours officers are spending on that, so.
So it makes our police budget go, go farther to do enforcement.
Yeah.
Which is good.
How, how much was the grant?
Um, I want to say it was like 5,000.
And then we, and then she got another, she's in the second round or something too.
Yeah, something like that. I'd have to get the, those figures for you, but, yeah, it's, it makes a difference. She's on the police.
So you're using that in overtime hours for?
We just can count it as straight time. So if they do the hours of enforcement, this budget saves its money and their hours get charged against the grant.
Oh, okay.
So it just saves the money in the police budget, uses that money first for those criteria.
Because we have a form that we fill out during the shift of, okay, I spent two hours doing traffic or doing speed enhancement or what have you, for DUI, and then we take that form and we submit it to ODOT and then they reimburse us.
Okay.
That leaves more money in the budget for overtime, for things that we aren't planning.
That, is that kind of the standard procedure in most police departments? I mean, do they? I mean, I mean, just what popped to the top of my head was, somebody pulls a couple of extra hours, but you're paying overtime, but wouldn't go as far, but you need to enhance your presence, but.
Yeah, well, some of the bigger agencies that have the staffing, that's what they use it for, is for overtime. So, because they have more staff that they can do that with.
Yeah, I got, I was just curious.
We are in a little different situation.
I just have one quick. Go ahead. The, the amount of calls, is this an average number?
So, CCOM is the one who generates this report, so they do it monthly, and what they'll do is they'll take that, the monthly calls and they'll categorize them, break it down that way, so.
Yeah, I mean, the reason, it just seems like a high number of, of calls.
Were you talking about the year end or the month?
Yes, the, the year-to-date.
Well, you figure, what, October, we had 249 calls of service just for that month. And then obviously November was only 187, but December was back up there, it was, you know, 225, so.
Like 195 a month, and that can be anything, right? Could be a suspicious person, suspicious vehicle, welfare check. Domestic. Prowler. What was the one that Dale always says, says shooting? Promiscuous shooting. That happened five times.
We had four in December.
Yeah.
Had four of them.
What does promiscuous mean again? Like, not a, not a?
Out of the ordinary.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what they call it. Out of the ordinary shooting.
I'll make sure.
Yeah.
If you were in Portland, it wouldn't be no big deal.
Speaking of grants, do you know if the school district has applied for?
I don't know.
I haven't heard.
The helmet has not said anything to me.
Okay.
So.
I might ask them here. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Good.
City administration.
Okay, so I got a great email yet last week. We received an email from DEQ stating that they've allocated $100,000 in funding to investigate the well up Nokes Road, Mary Ann Odom's, adjacent to the city's old landfill site. So those funds will be used to investigate and test her well, and then should it find leaching from our dump, that would also be the funding that would put in a new well. Should there not be leaching and it's just not producing, that still gives us the green light to be off the monitoring, because the leaching is what they're concerned about and why we have to pay for the monitoring of the old dump site. So that's awesome. Next steps are Ian, the guy that I had been working with, will be in contact with me because there'll be paperwork to fill out, basically saying, yes, we agree to be the partner in these, this fund allocation. So I'll bring that to you guys if it's anything that needs legal ease and approval that way, or if it has any hooks in it, I'll probably just send it to you to review anyway. So that's exciting, because we've been waiting a long time for that, and we didn't know if they would put any money from the orphan well site towards our project, but they have, so that's awesome. The ODF docks grant, so the, we still have the installation of the cables or chains, whatever we're going to do mounting the docks to the anchors, and then a bit more rock at the walk-on dock, which got completed. And then next week, we're looking to maybe try and address the old dock placement. Those, that, those kind of walkways have been settling, and now we need some more rock, and then we need to kind of fit it, fit the end of the dock in so it doesn't move so much before putting the legs on. So we've sent in all our final requests for the retainage, which was what ODFW was holding. We sent them the drone photos of the docks and the article out of the paper and some different things, and requested the remaining money come to us. ODOT ADA project, so that's still slated to be here March. You'll see pink spray paint all over with their different tell, tell signs of what they're doing. I sat in on the meeting for Rainier again today. They do that every Tuesday, and they seem to be, it seems to be going okay. They've had very few snafus between the city and this contractor. I went to lunch with the head of Blue Mountain because they're back trying to re-instigate kind of some connection to the community via different fundraisers and different things we're working on, to connect them to the community. But they said Hood River, it's not the same contractor, and Hood River is torn up horribly, and they have not had good results. So lucky we have Brown Contracting, who seems to be doing well in Rainier. So we don't have their contractor at least. So you'll see some things that'll be kind of changing. We're going to be removing the city hall sign because that's something they paid us for, because that's going to be somewhat of a landing. The sidewalk's going to get wider as it relates to that corner. But yeah, I'll keep you guys updated if they are planning on coming earlier than March, but at this point, they're still slated to come here in March. The union negotiations, so we weren't able to meet the week. I wrote this because one of the members was on vacation. They have sent me documentation that they approved the amendment that we made, so I'll be bringing that to council with the track changes to show you the one change they request about minimum staffing levels and what happens to their vacation should they not be able to take it. That's the one change, and you guys will see that, and then I'll be asking you to authorize me to sign it, so that we can. And that contract is 2024 through '27, so we're a year through it already. We just need to get it signed so that they can work under a contract. Everybody will be good. CDBG springboard sewer project, so the seating at Hawkins and Shea's been done. They already addressed the manhole at Bridge and filled that one, and they're working on kind of their last remaining manholes to be taken offline. That was finishing up last week. And then they're, they still have to replace the backstop. The poles survived the yarding out, but the fabric did not, so they're going to redo the fabric behind the backstop at Hawkins. And then they'll be paving when that happens. They passed all the tests and we're just, I got approval today to go teach my third grade lesson on fair housing laws, which is the last activity that CDBG is requiring of us. I got my coloring book approved through the school district and my lesson plan, so I'm going to go up and teach third grade about what fair housing laws are in Oregon and document it, and then turn that into CDBG, so then that'll be done. And then we just have the upcoming closure, regular meetings and upcoming closure for President's Day on the 17th. I will be out of the office the rest of the week for my normal infusion and then some medical things.
Of this week? Okay.
Any questions for me?
I had a question for Stephanie. When is that county-city dinner?
Yeah.
February?
Yeah.
So they switched it a couple of times.
Yeah.
I just got an email yesterday, or last week.
Asking which, what you wanted. Asking which, what you wanted?
From RSVP. I thought, did you give?
RSVP for you guys, but you had to tell them what meal you wanted.
Oh, okay.
So if you could email them, because the, is it the Elks?
Yeah.
The Elks are hosting. I want to know how much lasagna and?
Chicken?
Roast?
Oh, yeah, something.
Peanut butter and jelly.
So it's February 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Six o'clock or?
I want to say it says 6:30. We can send it again.
Okay. And address and everything. At the Elks Lodge, isn't it?
Yeah, right there in St. Helens.
Okay. That's all. Any other questions?
Administrator.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay. Items on the mayor and councilors.
So we all got the message or the email from League of Oregon Cities for the Government Spring Conference. And I was wondering if somebody was planning on going and if we should be applying for a scholarship. Are you going? Okay. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, because the deadline for the scholarship is the 29th. And if it requires city council action, we need to do that tonight to apply.
I couldn't hear that.
Applying for a scholarship to go, for one of council to go to the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference? They, they tell you like what laws they're pushing that cities are wanting or what, how they're lobbying on our behalf or whatever. All the things.
When is that?
Interested in going?
When is that, Susan?
It's May 1st and 2nd. It's a Thursday, Friday.
In Salem?
It's actually in North Bend.
Oh.
Yeah. I probably will not go to it because of my work schedule.
Is anyone interested in going?
Are you, Dale? I, I might, I, I think I'd like to. I may have plenty of time around then.
Yeah.
Don't know yet. Again. But if, if, if we wanted to apply for a scholarship, we need to do it. And I just wanted to make sure that if somebody was going, that we brought that up. And if you don't mind my going, I think that would be kind of fun. And I just need permission to apply from council.
Yeah, I was like, it's not me that's going to tell you.
That my permission?
Thank you. Do we have to have a motion?
To apply for a scholarship, I don't think we have to have a motion. For a counselor's scholarship to go to the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference?
Part to do a motion because then they need documentation. I can send it.
Okay, that's probably good too, to prove it was a scholarship ask that the council voted to apply.
In case they ask for it. Sometimes they ask.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we apply for a scholarship in the name of Council Wygner in the spring League of Oregon City meeting in North Bend.
Good. So moves. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I presume I abstained since it's. Yeah, about you.
Motion carried with Council Wygner abstaining.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
So we have some workshops that we need to be moving forward, correct?
I'll bring the, a staff report.
With a calendar.
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't hear that before.
So.
To the February 3rd, you're going to bring your calendars. We're going to bring you.
No, I understand. I can't remember what, I know the one workshop on the Forest Street Plan and the other.
Forest Street and?
The Logging and Timber Fund Management. We thought we'd do on the same night.
What was the other?
Well, you'll see in the staff report at the next meeting. And here's your homework.
It was the two, it was the two, it was from the priorities, right? Timber Fund and Logging were together.
Elsemore you were asking for.
Unrelated.
Oh, it's the street philosophy.
Yeah.
It's street philosophy and what reserve you're going to set aside for streets.
Yeah.
Yep. Before budget. So those two things need to happen before budget. Yeah. Just took a little bit of time for the file of packs to go.
You don't go click no more.
Yours is a Rolodex. It just spins. Cards are flying out.
So I did happen to see the light of Forman there today. After I left here, I drove, they were down, they just got through smoothing out the parking lot next to the Legion. Looked excellent.
Oh, good.
Looks like we gained a little gravel there, maybe.
Probably.
A little. And the hydro-seated Shea Park, I haven't got over to look at Shea. I mean, he's saying, well, we'll probably have to come back. There's some settling in those trenches for sure.
Yeah.
But anyhow, I give them a kudos. They have done an excellent job, I think, as a contractor. It'd be so easy. Skimp here, skimp there, try to make a buck. I mean, they put all the pavers back. It looks.
Oh, I know. I saw that. That was awesome.
Sure, that was, had to be done, but I think it's been nice working with them. They seem to care.
Yes.
That's what I told them. Thanks for caring. They even contacted me last week to replace the trees.
Oh, good.
So.
Nice.
I was impressed.
Yeah, we talked about it. We were like, okay, what needs, what remedies do we have out there, you know? And they were on it. They had all the things they were going to do.
My love to interject, the Forman, speaking of the same person Jeremy Philby, he's the chairman. He came up to me and he said, one of our concerns for the citizens here is that we make it very yeet and bleak. The finished product in the parks is what the people will see. What's going on in the ground is not what the state remembers for what we do.
Yeah. Like that's going to be our calling card. They won't care that their toilet flushes and the sewer goes.
Well. And I won't have sewer.
Prowler cares, but that's about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
Backing up in the house.
They're right, for sure.
No, it's, it's, that's, it's a relief. It really is.
Oh, I bet.
Yeah.
I can't imagine the stress of, well, what happened? What's happening?
No.
Good.
Lot of hard work went into the whole project.
Okay. I think we're ready for an action item summary.
Okay. So I have that, I'm going to get with Mr. Cosley and give him the seating plan and what the engineers developed, respond to Brett. And then staff's going to bring a draft resolution outlining 2,200 K, 6,000 lumen minimum, networking with our vendor to also meet that standard and then figure out if there's funds in the budget and tell you where those would be. And February 3rd, what does it say? February 3rd? Oh, yeah. Bring that back on February 3rd. Sorry. Where can we find the money? That's what I got. Any other things I missed?
Okay. Well, thank you all for attending tonight. I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:50 PM. Meeting adjourned.